Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for May the 11th, 2020. If you would stand with us, please. Our Vice Chair, Pettis Reed, will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Pettis?
Shall we pray together? Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the day that you've given us. We're thankful for all the many blessings that we have here within this county. The blessings that we have, we understand that they all come from you. Father, we ask that you continue to watch over us, that you protect us, that as we go about in this difficult time, and all the things that are involved in it, Father, we ask that you give us the strength, that you give us the ability to deal with it, that you be with those that are sick, that you be with those that care for them, that you look after our first responders as they have to deal with this issue and the situation. Father, we ask that you be with us this evening as we go about dealing with the issues of the county, as we plan for the future, give us the ability to know what to do and how to do it. Watch over all of our citizens, watch over everybody, Father. Guide us and protect us. We offer this prayer in the Son's holy name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Here.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. This meeting of the Rutherford County Planning Commission is being conducted electronically pursuant to Governor Bill Lee's Executive Order 16. I would ask for a motion that conducting this meeting electronically is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of COVID-19.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All who's in favor of that motion, please say aye. And motion carries. Thank you. I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Aye.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here. Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
It carries.
Thank you. We have no minutes to approve, which brings us to, and no items have been withdrawn or deferred. That brings us to the meat of our meeting tonight. Item six is new business. We have five rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. Item 6A, the item number is REZ20-008, Turncal Holdings by Dalen Stevens. Location is 125 Mason Court. Commissioner is Joe Gurley. Commission District is nine. Size of the site is approximately 14 acres. Tax map is 78. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial general CG. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners, both all those here and those who are on the net there. This first application that we will be discussing, as you stated, is located along Manson Court. The applicant is proposing to zone this property commercial general in order to develop a construction company on the site. This location would be the corporate headquarters, which would include an office and shop for maintenance of equipment, which couldn't be handled on the job site. The applicant has included a concept plan, which is included with your, on your iPads today, also in the agenda packets as well. Since this is not a planned development, of course, this is not a binding concept plan, but this gives you an idea of the direction that the applicant is looking to go. The applicant has stated that this site is not envisioned to be used as a contractor storage area or a lay down yard, although some equipment may be on site for maintenance. For a little bit of reference, the property immediately to the west was recently annexed and zoned into the city of Murfreesboro. Your staff comments said at, when we wrote these at the time, it was still pending second and final reading in the city. That has since happened, I believe, on April 30th. That has taken effect, that'll take effect here within the next few days as far as the zoning everything is concerned. Information provided by Murfreesboro does indicate that, and the plan that you have in your agenda packets actually is kind of what they're doing. It's mostly a residential type development, has a residential attached and a detached element looking at it. The issue that has the possibility to create some issues with this site possibly is the right of way for Manson Court in that area is actually within, it's within the city limits of Murfreesboro, but it's actually TDOT right of way. So there are conversations going on between TDOT, the applicant for that property that was recently annexed into the city, about possibly rerouting that. Now, that's something that TDOT will have to approve, and I know that obviously you can't deny access to the subject tract. So there's still a lot of discussion going on, on that particular issue currently. That has not been resolved at this date. The applicant may have some more information on that. We did speak briefly about that about a week or so ago. Again, access would be along Manson Court to this, as of current at least. So anything that they would want to do, of course, on the property would have to meet our zoning regulations. Also, commercially zoned properties are required to install type 2 buffers adjacent to residentially zoned properties. The concept plan does show existing tree lines. Some of that material would probably need to be removed for the development should this be approved, but the remaining plannings could be counted towards the buffer requirements. And of course, we would have to see a landscape plan as part of any kind of a site plan approval should this be approved ultimately. So with that, again, this property is located within, between 840 and Murfreesboro City Development, both to the north and west, with access only along Manson Court. When considered an absence of the proposed development to the west, which is in the city of Murfreesboro, staff doesn't see this rezoning as being inconsistent with the county's comprehensive plan with that annexation and rezoning to the west being approved. However, that, depending on how that access works out, it just, I think, changes the dynamic somewhat. But with, as you can see, they still would have access to the property. It just would be through that development that the city of Murfreesboro recently approved. So with that, I know the applicants, just looking at the screen, I know that they are, their representatives are present and are probably wanting to speak. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff at this time?
Just for reference, the proposed-
Or Mike's not on?
Just for reference, the proposed site rezoning is right here, and this is the city property that Doug mentioned that's going to be annexed into the city of Murfreesboro and developed. So.
That one's already approved.
Yes, that was approved by second and final reading at the city back on April 30th.
Mr. Phillips. Are there any more tracks past this one, the subject tract? Or is it-
Well, when you look at the, yeah, when you look at the overall plan, I mean, the road pretty much ends at this track, the subject tract that we're looking at. I mean, there's property to the northeast, but that's already in the city, so.
You can kind of see on the screen, maybe the hatching here, the colored property is already in the city limits, and this is what's being annexed into the city currently. So there'll be an island of the county.
Other questions for staff? I think there are representatives from the applicant. I think Rob Matt and Dalen are on here somewhere. Who wants to, who wants to speak?
This is Matt. I can, I can talk. I think Doug did a pretty good job explaining what, what we're proposing here. It is mainly for Rosso's office space, but there will be a shop there, as Doug said, to do intermittent maintenance for things that can be done on the site itself. So, and I believe that my client, Dylan Stevens, the owner of Rosso, has been in at least contact with the developer of the adjacent property, and I believe that they've, I believe he's expressed a willingness to work to come to an access resolution. But I know that TDOT still has to finish reviewing and approving any abandonment of their property that Doug mentioned. And I think Dylan is on the, on the call if he's got anything to add to that.
Yeah, I'm here. I don't specifically have anything to add, but be willing to answer any questions that anyone has.
Anyone have any questions of the applicant at this time?
Is it up to the applicant to work out the access road with TDOT, right?
Correct.
So Doug and Mike and Matt, this is Commissioner Kush.
Yes, sir.
The only little hiccup that could possibly be would be the TDOT and the access road, right?
I mean, pretty, as far as moving forward with the development, I mean, they have to have access somehow.
Yeah, I mean, they can't not, they cannot not give them access.
Right.
So TDOT has to grant access to the property, right? So, but who bears the expense to that? Does TDOT pitch any money, or they just deed, deed right away?
Well, probably what would happen, I mean, probably, and Matt might be a little better with this, but-
If you want me to, Doug, I can respond to that. So the process for TDOT is a fairly lengthy process, Commissioner Kush, is that we are, the developer next door has petitioned TDOT to decide if they can designate this as access right of way. And so that has to go to their excess land committee, which meets about every other month. Prior to doing that, TDOT's staff has asked the adjoining developer to get access between each parcel worked out. For the most part, that's not an issue because he's, that developer's buying almost all the properties. It's this last piece here that he needs somebody to agree on access. Assuming that TDOT says, yes, this is excess land, then they'll go through an appraisal process, and then that developer will actually have to purchase that land from TDOT at whatever those appraisals come back at. So it's, it's somewhere between a nine to 12-month process once you get going. It's a lengthy process.
And Matt, let me, let me ask, does this city development that we're looking at the schematic on that was just approved, does that also need this access road, or is that too far to the west?
So the city, that PUD inside the city has actually proposed to absorb that TDOT right of way, convert some of that into commercial space, commercial lots, some of it into alleyway, and some of it into townhomes through there. So it's a mixture, Commissioner Kush, but they would have to, that property is going to have to access Manson Pike, and so they would have to at least, if TDOT comes back and says, we're not, we don't think this is excess land, they would at least have to get a TDOT permit for the right of way, for the right of way access or the curb cut, which would be very typical to any connection to state highway.
So the city development doesn't have the skin in the game like your developer does?
Absolutely. We've, everybody involved has, has an advantage or has an upside to working together.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Commissioner Kush, if you, look, Manson Pike is down here, and they're proposing, I'll flip back, they're proposing to send their development all the way down to Manson Pike. This is what they're going to request to be called surplus land up here, that includes the Manson Court. So that's, that's part of what the city development needs is this land up here, but they, like Matt was saying, that they have to provide access to that property. And they do show a couple access points, one at the southeast and one on the east side. And I believe, Doug, didn't you say these would be public roads?
Well, at least the ones that are in the white, those other, I think those are more private alleys, those darker, that second one to the south there, to your point, who I think is more of a private alley.
Okay. So at least they've got at least one access point. They'll have to modify their concept plan to, you know, come in through here, and they'll have to work with the, this developer when Manson Court goes away and they're required to use these streets. So it's just a big process they'll have to go together.
Let my TDOT man ask a question, then I have one more, depending on what he asks.
So the proposed development for our, that we're looking at tonight is for a construction office, mainly office staff, and you said some light maintenance. Are we talking heavy equipment, tractor trailers, bulldozers?
Probably nothing like that, and I'll let them speak more to that. But they made it sound like it was going to be more any equipment that's not on site that needs some, like you said, light maintenance. We're not talking like a lay down yard for all their equipment. You may have some heavier equipment there from time to time, but I don't think there's a lot of 18-wheeler traffic or anything like that. But I'll let Matt and Rob talk more to that.
Yeah, Doug described that pretty well. It would be intermittent. We would, I'm not going to say we would never have an 18-wheeler come in there, but it would be an intermittent. We don't anticipate having the low boy come in and out of there every day. It would be as work can not be completed in the field. So, but it would happen occasionally, but intermittently.
So this is not Rosco's maintenance facility?
No, I think they try to do most of their maintenance on site, Commissioner. They, they have a maintenance truck that goes just job to job, and so this would really be for more of those larger projects that they can't do out in the field. They'd have to bring the equipment back.
So Doug, let me ask you a question.
You just said-
Matt just said that it could be months before he makes a decision on the property. So the dumb question is, why are we looking at this now?
Well, I believe the applicant just wanted to go ahead and move this forward. They probably have some sort of a contract on a property to purchase, and they may have some time limits they're dealing with, but.
Approved it.
Well, all you're approving, right.
The expiration date's going to run out on him anyway with us. He's going to have to come back nine months from now and ask for a re-
Not for rezoning, you wouldn't.
Well, no, I mean, if you pass the zoning, but the time will lapse for him to start construction, right? Don't we have a, don't we have a timeframe on-
The only time you have, you have 18, if he submits a site plan, and he would have 18 months after that. But for rezoning, yeah, he could zone the property commercial and just wait till everything works out. He wouldn't, he doesn't have a time limit for that.
Other questions of the applicant or staff?
Doug, you were, refresh me here again, you are neutral?
I was, the reason I was neutral on it really was more because of that pending development to the west. Again, if you just look at it, an absence of that, that development, you know, if that was just going to still be raw land, wasn't being developed, I don't necessarily have any real major issue with it considering the location of it. My concern really was more, well, how's that going to interact with the one to the west? But if the applicants for the property immediately to the west and this property are going to work together to work out whatever access needs they have, I mean, I personally don't really have any issues with it.
Make a motion to approve it.
We did.
We need to conduct a public hearing first. Any other questions for staff or the applicants? I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ20-008, Turncal Holdings. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve REZ20-008. All who's in, I almost did it again, Doug. Gail, would you please call a roll?
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail. Those planning commissioners that are attending virtually, are you hearing things okay? Do we need to speak up?
Doing good.
You're doing good here.
Very good. Thank you. Item 6B, REZ20-009, David Alcorn. Location is 4613 Veterans Parkway. Commission District is 20. County Commissioner is Trey Gooch. Size of the site is approximately six acres. Tax map is 93. The existing zoning is commercial services. Proposed zoning is commercial general. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property was zoned commercial services back in 2016 for the applicant to operate his real estate company. The existing house is used as an office and existing accessory structure behind the house is used for equipment storage, which is consistent with their zoning application at that time. According to information provided by the applicant, he has an automobile dealer's license and needs a location to keep his license active. In order to have a legally zoned property for the business, it has to be zoned commercial general. He'd like to use this property because commercial services would not allow for a car lot on the property. So that really is the reason for this application. Commercial general is that zone, the first commercial zone that does allow vehicle sales as a matter of right. The applicant has stated he's not planning on using the property for a car sales lot, but he does understand that if he should ever desire to do so in the future, he would have to submit an engineered site plan for review. Really, beyond that, nothing on this property is proposed to change. The overall reason we were neutral on this request, of course, this area, as we know, is kind of an area in transition. Right to the south, you can see on the map that Mike's got up, you can see several properties that are zoned either commercial fringe or commercial highway in the city, even some office professional in that area on both sides of the road. When you go a little further up toward 840, you've got a planned commercial development there that was approved several years ago. Back in the city, you have some commercial property in the county that was approved. I guess my biggest thing is just wanting to make sure that the planning commission understood that should this application be approved, that even though the applicant has no plans of actually operating a car lot on the property, there'd be nothing that could necessarily stop him from doing that or from selling the property for somebody who wants to do that, or for any other use that's allowed in the commercial general zone. So with that, I believe the applicant, I think I saw his name on the, on the call list there, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff at this time? Is the applicant online, Mr. Alcorn?
Yes, sir. This is David Alcorn. I'm online.
Okay, very good. Would you like to make a statement?
Yes, sir. As Doug stated, I do have a auto dealer's license, and the person that I was partners with has moved to Florida. Their location is no longer available, and in order to stay legal with the state, I have to have the commercial general. And like Doug said, our intent is not to have an actual car lot there. If that changed, we would be submitting a whole engineered site plan and going that direction.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the applicant or for staff? If not-
Yes, Doug, I have a question for you on that. What, remind me of some of the things that could be brought in here if this is approved as commercial general.
Yes, sir. Just bear with me a second. Let me get to my zoning ordinance.
For those of you who are attending the meeting online from a virtual perspective, if you would, when you say something, if you would tell us who you are, identify yourself.
Yes, this is Marvin Whitworth.
Sorry, I thought I had it pulled up, but I didn't. All right. Of course, commercial general, as we all know, the county's zoning ordinance has three, what I would call, primary commercial zoning classifications. Commercial neighborhood, commercial general, and then commercial services. Services being kind of in the middle. Commercial neighborhood kind of being on the low end as far as the use is allowed, and commercial general kind of being a little more wide open. The biggest differences between commercial general and commercial services, what it's currently zoned, there really aren't just a whole lot of differences, but there are just a few, and I will go through those here. Well, for one, like schools, community education facilities would be allowed in commercial services, but not in commercial general. Extensive impact facilities would be allowed by special exception only in commercial general. In other words, they couldn't be done by right, and I can give examples of that in our ordinance if anyone needs me to. Healthcare facilities like hospitals, things like that, would be allowed under commercial general, but not under commercial services. And I'll qualify this like I always do. Commercial entertainment, I'm sorry, adult entertainment is a allowable use only by special exception in commercial general, but there are additional standards in the zoning ordinance that have to be adhered to, and this lot wouldn't qualify for that. So that's not really a realistic use for this property. Automotive parking, we have seen some of those type uses in the past where someone just wants to have a lot where they park cars, would be allowed by special exception. In other words, it has to go with the border zoning appeals. Let's see. Motor vehicle sales, as we talked about, is the big reason they're asking for this. That's allowed in commercial general, but not in commercial services. Those are the primary differences between them, but most of your retail type uses that are allowed in commercial services are going to be also allowed in the commercial general as well. So if that answers your question, Mr. Whitworth. If not, I'll be more happy to go into a little more detail.
Yes, I'm good on that. Thank you, Doug.
Other questions for staff? This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item number REZ20-009 for David Alcorn. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one. I'll declare the public hearing closed, Commissioners.
Question. Doug, isn't, isn't the elementary school that opened a couple of years ago right, just right behind that?
It's a little bit, you're talking the overall Creek Elementary. Yeah, that, Mike's highlighting it. It's on the other side of, right in that, where you're circling.
It's on the other side of the-
Of Highway 96.
Side of 96.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Well, I'm pretty familiar with this area, living right out there, as I'm sure that Commissioner Kush is also almost directly across the street. Murfreesboro commercial fringe comes right up to the edge of the neighborhood there at the cloister. South, you've got commercial on the zoning on that same side of the street, and then there's one of the nicest Krogers in town right there on the opposite corner. Veterinary services and a kennel that's kind of new right over there. To the north, St. Thomas's building a new, like a satellite hospital, and I know Middle Tennessee Electric has a big campus that they have going in in that area, very close by also. This entire area is going to develop very quickly. This is probably the high-growth corridor up and down there, and veterans is, oh, not so much suited for residential, but more designed for commercial and a lot of traffic. So I, I think I can support this for what it's worth.
Got a motion?
Well, if there's no other discussion, I will make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Jim.
I make a motion second. David Jones.
We have a motion and a second to approve item REZ20-009 for David Alcorn. Any other discussion or questions? Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. This rezoning request will be heard before the full county commission on June the 11th. Item 6C, REZ 20-010, Matthew Kelly. Location is 440 Baxter Road. Commission district is four. County Commissioner is Robert P. Size of the site is approximately five acres. Tax map is 105. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This application comes as a result of a zoning enforcement action by the county. Our zoning enforcement office received a complaint about a business being operated from this property. After investigation, it was determined that a landscape company was indeed in operation, which had never received any zoning approval. The applicant has submitted a concept plan showing the layout of the property, which has been included with your agenda materials. Access to this property would continue to be along Baxter Road, of course. Should this application be approved, a site plan would have to be submitted, showing how the property would be brought into compliance with county standards. This would include access, parking, and ADA compliance. Commercially zoned properties are also required to install a Type 2 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned properties. Again, should this application be approved, they would have to submit a landscape plan along with the site plan to ensure conformance with parking lot and buffering landscape regulations, and the performance standards would also be required to be met as well. The applicant is trying to rezone this in order to continue operating the business that was not legally approved. Although the suburban belt character area, which this is located in, in our comprehensive plan, does anticipate non-residential uses, this would be the only property along Baxter Road to have a non-residential zoning classification. And staff standpoint, we don't feel that this would be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. So with that, I believe the applicant, or at least his representative, is on the call. I've seen his name pop up a couple of times. So, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You want to hear from the applicant? Okay. Mr. Kelly, are you available?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like to make a statement?
Yes. Well, first of all, when the property we bought, it was commercial already. It was a small engine repair place, different things like that. And, you know, with all the commercial vehicles or whatever, they're parked in the back where, you know, obviously, everybody can't see them, and it's, you know, I haven't heard any complaints from my neighbors whatsoever, and we're willing to go along with whatever the county decides.
Any questions for the applicant?
Any questions?
How long have you owned this property? So you purchased it?
The property's been owned for, I think around four years now.
Four years.
I think it was Jay and Jay, a small engine repair before all that.
This is Rhonda Allen. I have a question. On the size of the tract, it's listed as five acres. Would you need the entire five acres rezoned?
Well, it would be nice. That way, you know, it would, it would keep, you know, where we're parked off the road, everything is back where people actually can't even see it from the road.
That's kind of my question. I was just wondering if you would want to zone the rear portion of the property, if that's primarily where the business is conducted.
Yes, it is. But I mean, I'd like to get it all, and that way we don't have to go through, you know, anything else. But I mean, yeah, we can just do the back. But if that makes, if that makes the county happy, that makes me happy.
Well, this is just a note for Doug, and you might want to speak to this, Doug. I just remember we had the landscaping business along, I think it was Jefferson Pike, and if I remember correctly, that was, what we ended up doing for that parcel was we rezoned the back portion, because that was also an existing business.
Okay. We'd be more than, more than glad to just do the, whatever makes the county happy. If you want just the back part, and then we could leave an acre or two up front, acre and a half, whatever, and, you know, supply us whatever they need.
What size trucks? It's hard to see on the computer. Do you have going up and down Baxter Road?
Most of them are like pickup trucks, pickup trucks, and we have, we don't have any tractor-trailers or anything like that. It's pickup trucks and one or two that actually have 10 wheels on them. You know, not like a dump truck. One of them's like a boom truck, and the other one is, is like a chipper truck with 10 wheels. That's the biggest vehicles that you would have.
Any other questions for the applicant?
If I could just make a statement real quick on here. While the applicant was talking, I was pulling up our, on our map, our older zoning layer on here. I don't recall there being any commercial zoning on this property, and there's nothing indicated on our GIS. There may have been, maybe there was something going on on the property that we just weren't aware of, but this was not, from what I'm showing here, this was not commercially zoned.
Excuse me, I get mail from the tax people saying that, from the tax people, that that was commercially zoned here.
Well, it was probably taxed as commercial because of what was going on there. It may not have been zoned that way. The tax records typically don't show the zoning of the property.
Right, yeah. Okay. I didn't think, I didn't think you could do one or the other. I think you had to do both. I'm sorry.
I have a question for the applicant. Did you say you would be bringing in some 10-wheeled timber trucks or trailers, timber trailers?
No, what it is would be like chipper trucks, like a chipper truck. And one of, the biggest one has 10 wheels on it. The rest of them, like, have six. And then we have a boom truck that has 10 wheels on it.
Okay. So in the daily process, will you be, you won't be sawing or ripping any timber, but you will be doing a chipping? You'll have a chipping machine?
No, all we're going to do is park the vehicles back there.
Okay. All right, so...
That's all we, all we want to do is park, park the vehicles back there, and, you know, we give our neighbors mulch and different things like that. So there's no timber business going on here. We do sell plywood, though. You know, I give it to my neighbors, and my neighbor next door, he, he processed the plywood and sells it to old people, so that, you know, we don't burn it.
All right. We're looking, we're looking at a picture, kind of an aerial view, that looks like there's quite a bit of logs, or maybe they're big fence posts, but from the picture, it looks like quite a bit of what I would call raw timber or clean logs. I just want to make sure that we don't have a lot of noise on the property that would affect your neighbors.
Right. Oh, I agree. I agree with you. No, sir, we don't. We, there's, for that fact, just for the logs, they're put back there, there are people that, on occasion, they come by them because they want to make like cherry tables, and they, or veneer, or whatever they call it, they mill it. And so I either sell it to them or give it to them, whichever, because I, you know, I really don't need the wood. So, and the rest of it is plywood, and occasionally, we have to put a little bit of mulch back there, but most time, when people come, just like at the Rutherford County, where they give mulch away, I give mulch away here, too, for free.
Pettis.
I have a question. Are you a landscaper or are you a tree removal service?
Mostly tree removal, tree trimming, tree removal. We do landscaping as well. Install trees, trim bushes, different things like that. Cut grass on occasion.
You do most of your chipping on the job site, don't you?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we don't run anything, we don't run any equipment here at all, for the most part. I mean, it's not even a chainsaw, unless my neighbors cut much of the wood back there for plywood.
Other questions for the applicant? Not we're ready for our public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open for item number REZ 20-010 for Matthew Kelly. Anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, I'm Bill Jakes.
Mr. Jakes?
Yes, I just heard Mr. Kelly talking, and I'm one of the recipients of some of the logs and the chips and whatnot, and I think this is just a win-win-win for Rutherford County. Jim, I have known him less than a year, but he just does a wonderful job. I've recommended him to family and friends, and I'm also a local neighbor out here. But I have a little Woodmizer saw mill, and I'm a retired disabled Vietnam vet, and he's brought me some logs and chips in the past, and every one that he has worked for with tree removal, he just does an excellent job. And I think this is great because we're keeping a lot of carbon out of our landfills and whatnot, and, you know, these chips are just great for trees and all kinds of stuff. I've got a fairly good-sized farm and this stuff. Not too terribly far from Mr. Kelly. Anyway, he's providing jobs for people with all these tornadoes and power lines and whatnot, you know, electricity being out and stuff. Just a wonderful service. Like I said, I can't say anything but, everybody. And I, I'm finished.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. Say again, Mike?
Does anybody live in the house in front of the property?
I'm not sure. Mr. Kelly, is anybody living that, the front part of the property there?
Yes, 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 yes. Yes, they do.
Public hearing is still open. Anyone else wishing to speak? Not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, it's in your hands.
Doug, neighbors on either side, what have you heard?
Well, we have heard from some of the people up and down through there now. Some people have been opposed to it. Some people haven't had an issue with it, and we heard one from just now that didn't have any problem with it. But we did have some that did call, that did have some concerns. Of course, staff concern, of course, you know, just getting back to the actual application. Again, like I said, this would be the first non-commercially zoned property, regardless of what it may have been used for in the past. It was never zoned commercial. So this would be the first one along Baxter Road to be zoned that way. So, I mean, just so you understand.
Robert P., is he?
I talked to Mr. P. about this. It's probably been about a week or so since we've talked, and I don't know if he necessarily had a strong opinion one way or the other about it. I have not heard from him since that conversation, if he'd received any phone calls about it, so, from his district.
Doug, do we protect the integrity of the RM if we go a path like Rhonda suggested and keep the front part RM and only rezone the back part past the tree line there? Does that, does that help, hurt, indifferent?
Regardless, if you were to zone the entire property or just a portion of it, if nothing else, he wouldn't be able to, you know, if you zoned a portion of it, he wouldn't be able to creep all the way to the road with it. Regardless, and I just want to make sure the applicant understands this, but regardless if this is approved either for the whole site or just a portion of it, if it's approved at all, he's not going to be able to continue operating like he is. There's going to have to be buffering. There's got to be an engineered site plan brought to us, making sure that all the county requirements are met, because as of right now, it doesn't. But those are things, I just want to make sure that, you know, he understands that even if this is approved tonight and ultimately at the Board of Commissioners meeting, that, you know, he just doesn't think he's going to be able to continue operating in the manner it is now, and there's going to have to be a lot of changes to this, and it's going to be pretty substantial.
It's been a while since I've been down Baxter Road, but I remember it not being such a large road or in great condition. Has that changed? What's the condition of Baxter Road?
I mean, it's a two-lane county road, like most of the county roads that we have.
Mr. Chairman, this is Rhonda Allen. Yeah, as I was reading over the information on the application a little more closely, I had just made the same observation about Baxter Road being a two-lane county road. That's very, that's drastically different than what we looked at on the Jefferson Pike property. So I don't know that the similarities apply the same. My, I wasn't even necessarily in favor of the Jefferson Pike rezoning, because I don't like it when you do part of a parcel, when you rezone only part of it. But for whatever reason, I do remember that one passed, and so I was just trying to be equitable. I don't know that the same conditions apply to this situation. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear. I'm not necessarily a proponent of rezoning part of it. I just wanted to inquire, did he need the entire part of it?
Thank you, Commissioner Allen.
Doug, do you, have you had a conversation with the applicant, and does he know what lies ahead in terms of buffering and the things you mentioned?
I don't think we've had just a detailed conversation. Of course, you know, I think he was aware of changes were going to have to be made, and I'm sure he heard what I said here just a moment or two ago. But, I mean, it's not that it can't be done. It's just, it might be more involved than he originally thought it would.
Mike, can you zoom out?
All the maps that we have seen, there is no commercial zoning close.
You can see the, yeah, Mike's kind of highlighting some of the, that's probably the closest one right there, which is along, yeah, you can see on your, on the big screen there. That's the commercial services zone.
Which has access to John Bragg Highway.
Yes. Now, I will say that if you look at the aerial map, Mike, if you could zoom back in just a little bit, you can see right to the south, there is what appears to be a church right there. Yeah, you were just right on it, right there. That's a, I'm not sure which one, but that's a, that does appear to be a church. Ownership records, I was checking that out, look like it's a, it's a church. But it is zoned residential as well.
How far is that from Woodbury Pike?
From the subject property or the church?
Subject property to the, to the main road.
Just give my computer a chance to catch up. Just go get a cup of coffee and come back, and maybe it'll calculate it for you. Squirrel's getting tired.
There it goes.
It is 1,734 feet, give or take.
Third of a mile, roughly, I guess.
Yeah. About a third of the mile.
Pettis.
Has, has Code's gone over what he would have to do to bring this to that position, what was needed?
We would just enforce what's approved in the site plan. So he would have to turn the site plan into planning, and then it would come before you guys, and then we would enforce that.
I was just wondering, you know, but he would be willing to bring that back with the site plan and what all has to be required and this sort of thing, to take another look at it and what we'd need to do to change it? And the reason I'm saying that... And the reason I'm saying that, there are a lot of individuals that does, that's why I ask, is he doing chipping and tree removal or just landscaping? And when I look at that, because I know of individuals that are doing tree removal all over this county, and they're carrying this back to places like this. And they just haven't been turned in, I'm pretty certain. And they're sitting on property that's probably not, not commercial. And, and I know it just, I'm not excusing the situation of you start something like this, you don't ask whether or not, you know, I should be doing something or making it commercial. I'm not, I'm not taking that excuse, because I've seen that too many times done, and we got to get it right. But I just wondered.
Yeah, I will say that the initial complaint that we got was the traffic and trucks coming in and out of the property.
The traffic, okay, that's what I wondered. What was the complaint? Because that's the only reason I know Code's would have been there, there was a complaint somewhere. So it was the traffic and not the noise, not the, not the whatever else, it's just the traffic that's involved there. But, you know, I'm just wondering if there was some way to work in this area, if there's some way, if he's willing to go along with that, and we make that, go that direction. I'm just questioning. Because when I think of landscaping, when I think of this right here, it sort of gets within my agricultural thinking, too. I mean, this is something that is a responsibility that we need, and I know the other night when that storm come through here, there was a lot of people said, what do we do with all of this? And all the thing they could think of was, hey, let's carry it down to the landfill. Well, the landfill doesn't need it, and if we could do something else like this. But that's just a question.
Really, only the other reasonable option that's out there for this property, for this type of business, would be if the actual owner of the property lived on site and wanted to do a major home-based business. But obviously, what he's got on site right now would be drastically more than what he'd be allowed to do. So, now that can be approved by a special exception, that wouldn't have to come to your body, to this body here. But, but again, I mean, you're talking real reduction in activity in that situation, plus the owner of the property has to live on the site. So I think those were a couple of the reasons they went to ask for the rezoning application.
If I could add one thing, I'd, most of the time, try to keep my mouth shut and let you guys make the decision, and I'll support what you come up with, and I'll do that tonight. My caution is that sometimes we're impressed by the applicant and want to do what the applicant wants, maybe whether or not it is the right thing for this piece of property, and I'm leaning toward that decision myself. I'm impressed with Mr. Kelly, I'm equally impressed with Mr. Jakes, and support their business decision. But if this piece of property is zoned for commercial use, it's going to open up a corridor for other properties in that area to be zoned. Plus, it's also, the decision that we have to make, is this piece of property appropriate for commercial zone? Mr. Kelly and, once again, Mr. Jakes, both are likable people, but my decision will be made based upon the property and not the people making the recommendation. Is that kind of what you were hinting at, Pettis?
Now, bring the page down. You got five vehicles, you got five vehicles, or four vehicles and a trailer on the left at the bottom of the page. You got, it looks like a motorhome in the top left, a trailer, then you got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight more vehicles. So that's 12, or 14. That's 14 pieces of equipment on a residential piece of property. So, it's either a business or junkyard, either, neither of which are approved. Now, you got another trailer, a big low boy over on the right, and another trailer there. So, you know, you're closing in on a dozen and a half pieces of equipment. I'm surprised the neighbors haven't raised a lot more trouble than the one complaint you have, because it looks like, when you pan out, that although there's tree, it's treed, it looks like on the foreground here, there's not a lot of real buffer and screening right there. And I get, we need a place like this to do this kind of work, but I'm going to make a motion to deny.
We have a motion and a second to deny item number REZ 20-010 for Matthew Kelly. Any other discussion, any other questions? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P.? Chip Penion?
Yes.
Craig Lynch? David Jones? David Jones? Jim Everwater? Lee Bogle? Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Mike Kush? Pettis Reed? Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Doug Phillips?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Could you check again with Dave? I think his mic was muted, I don't think he's muted now.
Thank you. My vote is yes.
Thank you, David. The motion to deny carries. This will also be scheduled to be heard before the full county commission on Thursday night, June the 11th. Item 6D, REZ 20-011, Barley Venture by Rob Mollicon. Sulfur Springs Road and Shacklet Road, Commission District is 3, the County Commissioner is Michael Rather. Size of the site is approximately 157 acres. Tax map is 48 and 57. Existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for light industrial, LI. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The properties that we're looking at have been a subject of different discussions for rezoning over the last several years. This current applicant would like to rezone and combine the subject properties, and there are four different properties on here, to create, and this is from their applicant, from their letter that's included with your agenda packets, to create a light industrial development for local, state, national, and/or international businesses that need larger tracts of land for their businesses. The letter included with the applicant's submittal materials, again, has been included with that. The applicant has submitted a concept plan, which is in your agenda packet, but we also have a larger one that we can put on the screen for your ease of viewing. According to the applicant's letter, potential uses could include storage warehouses, transportation, distribution, and shipping-type uses. Since this is not a planned development application, the allowable uses would be determined by the zoning ordinance, as would the concept plan that you're seeing. They're not locked into any of that, that just gives you an idea of maybe a direction that they would like to potentially go. Primary access to the properties would be along Sulfur Springs Road. The concept plan does show a proposed cul-de-sac with a fire crash gate along Shacklet Road on the very south end of the property. Staff, of course, is concerned with the traffic that could be generated from the zoning of this development to LI. Since there aren't any identified uses, a traffic study wasn't required on the front end, because quite frankly, we wouldn't know exactly what to be studying in that regard. However, should this application be approved, we would require an engineered traffic study for any site plans that would be submitted, and we probably would want to see some improvements to Sulfur Springs Road to help facilitate access to this property and also to 840. This study should also include signal warrants analysis and all that through the intersection, even going to the east at the Triway Market, you know, right there at the Sulfur Springs and Leana Road intersection. Industrially zoned properties are required to install a Type 3 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. Again, should this application be approved, a landscape plan would be required with the site plan showing conformance with those regulations. Of course, if they end up doing some interior-type lots, there may not be buffering necessarily on some interior lots, but on the exterior adjacent to the residentially zoned properties, there would be. And performance, excuse me, performance standards would also have to be met with this application. This ultimately, since there's no uses identified with this at this time, is a speculative request. Staff does understand the applicant's desire to market the property in a manner that feels, and feels a comprehensive plan, does generally support this kind of development near an interstate interchange. However, that being said, and you can see this under staff recommendation, it's not possible to predict the effects this rezoning may have on the area, since the uses are generally stated at this point. We go back to what we were saying before, the minimum, we feel that road improvements to Sulfur Springs Road and possibly Shacklet Road would be required, and which could include widening turn lanes and possibly signalization, traffic studies would be required. Drainage is also a very large concern. I know Mike's had some concerns about this concept plan as he looked at it. They've made some tweaks to it as far as some of the concerns that we had. Of course, we won't know ultimately what all those concerns will be until we see more specific uses on the property. I had a couple of conversations today with the Commissioner of that district, Mr. Rather. I'm not sure if he's on the call or not, but he can, if he's on the call, I'm sure he can kind of elaborate on his concerns. Of course, I think he had some of the same concerns we did as far as that goes, but did state that, you know, if they would commit to not having any access on the Shacklet Road, and of course, would do traffic studies, he'd have a higher comfort level with it. But with that, again, if he's on the phone, I won't speak for him, I'll let him continue on the conversation. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time.
Questions for staff at this time? I believe we have several people that are online, on the phone, wishing to speak. Rob, are you one, going to make the first comments?
Yes, Chadmer Phillips, I'm here. Rob Mulchen, SEC, I'm here with behalf of my client tonight to bring forth what we're hoping to do is build a general light industrial district on this property. Some of you may know that, you know, in regards to the 840 corridor, Rutherford County doesn't have a lot of opportunities for this type of development. A lot of the, a lot of the other interchanges that are in place today are the topographic challenges would be significant in regards to light industrial development being put in. Now, that light industrial development that we're talking about, this property, is on a very flat piece of terrain, so it is very conducive to a light industrial type of development. Now, whether that be warehouses, or distribution, or even smaller businesses. My client has had some interest in businesses here in town that need a little extra room to grow, and in town, they don't have that room to grow, and those uses are including for, you know, areas for parking and/or maintenance buildings, that kind of stuff, that would go along with some light industrial type of uses. If you look up the 840 corridor, once you cross our county line going towards Wilson County, the next two interchanges, Couchville Pike and Clayville Interchange and the 109 Interchange, they all have opportunities for these larger industrial spaces. Rutherford County does not provide for that along 840. It's all pretty much right now along the I-24 corridor. We have some clients that are out there that are willing to look at this property, but they aren't willing to look at it until we have that zoning in place to say that they're going to be guaranteed to be able to bring their businesses to Rutherford County to help grow their marketplace in regards to the industries and businesses that are in Rutherford County and also this area of Middle Tennessee on that side. So, we felt that this was an opportunity for Rutherford County to expand its industrials type of basis in regards to the 840 corridor. I think if you think about 840, it is a well-located location here at Sulfur Springs. You're on 840, gives you opportunities very quickly to get to I-65, I-24, I-40. It's very centrally located in regards to businesses that would need to have distribution throughout the country, especially here in the middle portion of the, you know, the south. So, it is an opportunity, I think, for the county to grow in regards to jobs and infrastructure on that side. It is a great piece of property, like I said, in regards to the actual terrain that's out. Some of the commitments that we've made in regards to this light zoning, as Doug talked about with Mr. Rather today, we've started from the get-go in discussions with Doug and engineering on this project months ago, was that we weren't going to make any connections to Shacklet Road. We understood that the Shacklet Road is way undersized in regards to any traffic today, let alone anything that might have come out of this development. So we made the commitment to make certain that with our design that we have in this concept plan, and granted, it is a concept plan and not a guaranteed set-in-stone thing, but we're making the commitment as the developers on this property to make certain we don't have any access, whether that be, you know, pedestrian, I mean, personal vehicles or truck traffic to Shacklet Road. We will be providing in some form or fashion, whether it be, you know, at the location we're showing the concept plan down where the little stub road comes in next to the interstate, to provide a crash gate at access point only, that's for fire and safety vehicles only to get to Shacklet Roads. We have no intention, from the development standpoint, of whatever we may come forth with the site plan on this project, to go to Shacklet Road. Our main access point is going to be up on Sulfur Springs. We're ideally located right at the end of the T-dot rightaway, before you get onto county rightaway on Sulfur Springs. So we have very quick access to an interchange on the interstate that allows great access for potential clients, businesses, to get their businesses moving and their infrastructure moving out and about in regards to their businesses, whether it's here in Middle Tennessee or all throughout the country. So we feel it's a great opportunity for not only the county, but also for other industries that want to come to move here on that side, and/or potential growth for those people who have businesses here in town that feel they need a little extra room that they can't afford to get a hold of today within the city boundaries that they're already confined to on that side. So, we think it's a great opportunity. We do know that we will be providing some landscape buffers between ourselves and the adjacent residentially zoned properties. We will be looking at the opportunities, you know, in regards to stormwater maintenance and management, in regards to each of these sites, whether this be a overall stormwater program for the entire development, or it'll be on a track-by-track basis, we'll be taking care of meeting those stormwater requirements on a site-by-site basis, or globally for the overall development on that side. We'll be looking at this from one of two ways, from a sanitary sewer standpoint, we do, if you look at the map, you see the shaded areas that are in, on the plan, those are areas for septic soils. So we're looking at either doing individual septic systems on some of these lots, depending on how this plays out, or a unified privatized step system that would utilize those soils to take care of any of these sanitary wastes that would come from these businesses on that side. So, we kind of view this as an opportunity that we all potentially can't pass up in regards to Rutherford County, and making certain that, you know, this is something that we've spoken to the Chamber, and that something that the Chamber feels is a great opportunity for us to get into this 840 corridor with some kind of light industrial area to promote business more in this county on that side. So, I think across the board, it's a great opportunity, and like I said, we're willing to work with staff as we go through this process, if this, you know, rezoning moves forward, make certain that it turns out to be a great project as we go through in regards to, you know, whether it be the infrastructure we need to get into this, or even, you know, regards to our vehicle traffic getting back to 840. My client, Ken O'Brien, is on the phone, too, if you have any questions for him.
Doug, refresh my memory, hasn't, have we not looked at this property a couple of times with?
We've looked, I mean, it hasn't been anything recent, but we've looked at various things, a lot of the things that we talk to people about never make it this far. We had talked the last couple of years regarding a, if I remember right, it was similar type use to what the applicant's talking about, but it never actually did make it to the Planning Commission. They were looking to do something along the same lines that Mr. Mulchen's been talking about. We've talked to other folks about the possibility of doing like a, not a retreat, but like a facility, living facility for like transitional-type housing and things. We've looked at that before. That's been several, that was under, I think, under the older zoning code, that's been several years, but, yeah, we have talked to several people about these properties over the years.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes, sir.
I will say that I know on a personal basis, we have had a few clients try to come through with this property and look at it from a residential standpoint. I think some of the opportunities for residential are okay, but I think that the opportunity for this property is that you, being along an interstate and putting a subdivision within, you know, a stone's throw from your backyard on some of these lots, is not the most, you know, ideal location in regards to residential. That's why we feel that, you know, some kind of industrial type of opportunity is available, one, just because it's maybe one of the last tracks of the line that we have along 840 to provide for this type of service outside of a residential component.
Right. Rob, I'm in agreement, this is a pretty piece of land for an industrial type of site, similar to, like you said, it's down similar to, like you said, it's down a couple exits down into Wilson County. So, it's, it's not the, it's not the zoning that bothers me, it's the traffic that bothers me. Approximately what kind of frontage do you have on Sulfur Springs there? It doesn't look like much.
No, we don't have a lot of frontage on that side. When we're looking at that entrance up there, we would align with Hickory Lane across, across the, on the other side of the road there. So, that, like I said, that is the endpoint of TDOT's right-of-way access there in regards to the interchange on that side. We're only talking a couple hundred feet to get from our access point where Hickory Lane is at currently today, back to the entrance and exit ramps on the southbound side of 840 on that side. So, we're, you know, we're looking at this as being, you know, a very quick opportunity for our businesses that would take place on this property to get back to 840 without really being on a lot of other roadways in the county on that side.
Yeah. You say very quick for the convenience and I say that is a cluster of, of, well, you know, it's a, it would be a cluster. A short, a short span of frontage to get on to Sulfur Springs and then immediately negotiate the on-ramp and the exit ramp on, on sulfur. I, I would much rather you guys, you guys build a brand-new interchange down on Shacklet and keep the whole thing safe, but let me ask you this, is there, I, I know you'd be looking, is there any chance of obtaining additional property up there on Sulfur Springs to the, I'm trying to find the north arrow, there it is, to the west? Are you trying to, are you, I'm sure you're constantly looking at additional property to the west of what you have.
My client probably has looked at it, but I don't think the opportunity's been available for him to, you know, go after any of those additional properties over on that side. I know we haven't really had any discussions on that side. Kendall, I mean, if you have a moment, do you want to speak to that, if there's an opportunity on that?
Well, as far as the access, we've talked to a TDOT as far as coming off there and, you know, they were, they were favorable for what's there and didn't have any concerns as far as the distancing there. You know, we've talked potentially that there might need to be a turning lane or something like that to alleviate, as you said, coming off and being able to turn into the property, but I think that's something that would come from the traffic study. As far as additional property, I'm sure we'd be interested in things that, you know, connected to and can make it better, but that's a matter of being able to negotiate that with other landowners that are there type thing. I will say while I'm speaking that one of the things that we're looking at is, as you mentioned, there are a lot of companies, both small and large, that are looking for land that's already has the correct zoning. Specifically, one of the ones that went through today on the zoning was interested in our property, but the zoning's not there. And, you know, they've been looking for a couple of years and they're trying to find a, and get a site done and there's going to be another year still out. So, we've got, there's a real need for companies anywhere from the two acre up to the, you know, 50 acre site that are trying to locate a spot and don't necessarily have the time to go through. We've had this property for over 20 years. We've brought corporate head places that were willing to go there with their different ones and they've had to relocate. Some of them have ended up in the county and the other, but purely from just a time, timestamp of, they don't have time for us to wade through, develop and get all the roads in and wait on that zoning. So, what we're trying to do is to, to get all of these, I guess, concerns of the traffic and the different ones taken care of, but we can't necessarily put all of that infrastructure in without knowing that we've got the zoning there. So, that's, that's really where we're at. The traffic, I think, the turning lane would be something that I would think would be necessary and would not surprise me that traffic study would come and show that for us to have the easy access on to 840 and back off. But, you know, the companies that are looking for this and the, the main thing they want, a couple of them are, they're trying to get out of the middle of town so they don't have to, their trucks and their different things don't have to go through five or six traffic lights in order to be quickly on to something where they can go do their work in Franklin or Lebanon or, you know, wherever the case might be.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes, sir.
I did a quick measurement while Kendall was speaking, that's about 460 feet from the center line of where our access point would be on, on Sulfur Springs, back to the center point of the on-ramp to get down on the 840 southbound on that side. So, if you think about a 70-foot rig that's going to get you about, roughly about, about six rigs lined up potentially between, you know, where we would enter, you know, exit our property and enter the interstate on that side, that's that type of distance.
All right. I guess, Rob, my real question is, what, from, from corner to corner on your farthest north short leg of property, what, what kind of distance is that, that let's say borders Sulfur Springs?
Was it our entire property line?
Yeah, from, from that, where Hickory Lane is, like across the street there, I guess that's Hickory Lane.
Yes.
I mean, it looks like it's like 40 feet, just eyeballing it. What, what is your frontage there?
You're talking from our, our frontage access point there on, on Sulfur Springs?
Yeah. Your, your ingress and egress out of this property, which you're proposing to be on to Sulfur Springs, how, how wide a piece of property do you have to work with? Because it, to me, it only looks like it's about 40 feet.
It is about 40 foot. We have talked to TDOT in regards to that intersection there and they are willing to allow us to get more access through their right-of-way. So, making that some kind of right-of-way agreement, access agreement, or going ahead and actually outright giving us that in order to create that public right-of-way for the accessed road to get back into the property on that side.
That's where the real challenge is.
Thank you. For those of you that didn't pick up on that, that's Mr. Barrett, the applicant that was speaking. Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? There are several other folks that may be on the line. Ms. Richards and Mr. Clark, do you have any comments?
Yes, this is Thomas Clark. I reside next to the property, the actual 10 acres in question on Shacklet Road at 3300 Shacklet Road. I have a lot of concerns about this property coming right in, getting rezoned in the middle of all the residents here. We have Miles Farm, we got Walnut Lane, as you can see, with those homes, and I'm really concerned about the noise and light pollution of a, of what y'all are talking about. I can see, you know, tons of 18-wheelers we're here talking about coming in 24 hours, seven days a week, some of these warehouses that never shut down. And then, and we've beautified it, we're talking the land out here, Shacklet Road, we have a registered farm here, and people walk up and down Shacklet Road. It's beautiful. The property across the street from.
Mr. Clark, I need to interrupt you a second. You probably should be speaking under our public hearing and I'm going to go ahead. I'm going to go ahead and call the public hearing open and allow you to continue speaking and I apologize for not doing that earlier. Go ahead. Go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. But I was explaining about the beauti, I mean, Joe and Marger, his wife Margarita, that lived next to the old Shacklet house, brought their grandchild down to our farm to feed the animals here on the road, and they just admired about the big old trees, the big yellow fields and the beautification that we have. And our community out here, Leana, with us getting a new recycle center, the beautification, these nice neighborhoods, and I'm just taken back that we would want to put a warehouse, or warehouses, or whatever we're talking about amongst the beautification that we have out here. You just drive down Shacklet Road and see how beautiful it is, down Sulfur Springs towards Nice Mill. And, and yes, we do have a traffic issue, by the way. At 5:00, at 5:30, when you get off Sulfur Springs Road and it's back from the stop sign all the way back to the on-ramp, and I can't imagine 18-wheelers trying to get in and out of a 40-foot or whatever y'all are talking about, but that's my concern right now and that's it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Since the public hearing is open, is there anyone else wishing to speak in this public forum?
Is that Shacklet?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The, if, if this rezoning is approved, Doug, could it be made under the conditions that the staff recommended as far as the traffic patterns and, and the turning lanes? Could that be a condition?
No, sir, not with this type of application. This is just a conventional zone. Now, I will say that the regulations allow us to acquire the traffic studies whenever we see site plans. So, just because you couldn't condition it upon that doesn't mean that we would lose that opportunity to ask for those. But now, if this were a planned development, then you can make certain conditions, but not on a conventionally zoned property like light industrial.
Thank you.
Have you had any correspondence with Mr. Rather, which is the Commissioner out there?
Yes, sir, a couple of different times. I've talked with him about this. He, I mean, he has concerns, but his concerns also echo a lot of what staff's concerns are as far as the traffic studies and possible access on to Shacklet Road. You know, if, if, if they, basically what, from what I understand, I guess he's not on the call, but from what I understand from the conversations we had, you know, he's more comfortable with it, with the traffic study, understanding that there may be a lot of road improvements that need to be done, and also he doesn't want to see any access along Shacklet Road. Now, again, we can't condition that, but we would see, if this were approved, we would see site plans where we would say, look, we don't want this access here, or something like that. We would have that opportunity again. But I, yes, I have had conversations with Mr. Rather about this.
Why, why couldn't you enforce no access to Shackle, Shacklet Road? And I, I preface that because I thought I heard Rob say that on behalf of, as he's representing his owner, that they would not entertain access to Shacklet.
Right, right.
They say, okay, we won't do it if that's part of the deal. Why couldn't we hold them to that?
You can't make it a condition of approval on a conventionally zoned piece of property like this. This isn't a planned development, so you're not allowed to put conditions upon it, like we used to do the older conditional use permit system. We don't do that like that anymore.
Okay, so if we approved the zoning tonight and when they come back with a site plan and they say, oh, dead gum, that 40 feet's just not enough, access off Sulfur Springs, we're going to have to go to Shacklet, we can say, eh, no, can't do that.
Well, you can say that. Now, I don't know, and I'd probably let, want to have Nick chime into this a little bit deeper, but I don't know if you can necessarily hold them to it because it wasn't a condition of approval. You're taking him at his word, basically, that he's going to do what he says he's going to do. Right, right.
I'm going to echo what, what Doug has said. If body wants to approve the application and rezone the property to light industrial, I don't think that you can put contingencies or conditions of approval such that if, when he comes back and the applicant doesn't abide by what he's saying he's going to do, that it's going to be revoked and it's going to be rezoned back to residential. I don't think you can do that. That said, this board, if it approves the rezoning, will have the opportunity to make the same sort of examination that you're doing now of public health, safety and welfare for that area and examining the appropriateness of the site plan. And as the site plan comes back to you and it has four different warehouses on it and they're showing that they're going to touch Shacklet Road, I imagine that this body is going to say, well, that site plan doesn't provide for the health, safety and welfare of the community and is not going to approve that site plan. Does that make sense, Mr. Kush?
If I were to vote, let me ask you this question. If I were to vote for the zoning change, but base my vote conditionally on the fact that it doesn't access Shacklet, then do I not have that right to withdraw? Or, or if it comes back and it, they have to go on Shacklet, or they say, oh, I don't remember ever saying we wouldn't do that?
You're not wa, if you vote yes today, you're not going to waive your ability individually to vote no on a site plan that they come back here with if it doesn't meet with the condition that you've, that you're wanting. Now, I don't know if your other members on this board would agree with you once that site plan comes back, but if you vote yes right now, all you're doing is approving the zoning. Now, Doug made the distinction about a PUD. This is not a PUD. A PUD, you all routinely will see the booklet and it'll come with certain, much more detail and, and other contingencies that you'll want to put on it, and if they ever wanted to do something different, they'd have to come back and amend, amend that. And so, you've got the ability to hold them to assert of performance standards. This is just a rezoning and it's just for light industrial. We don't know what the use is going to be, but if this board thinks that this piece of property is appropriate for light industrial uses, it should approve it, if that's what this board believes.
So, if we, question it come back as a PUD, that gives us more, as a body, that gives us more role to ingress egress?
That's correct.
Right?
You, you'd have that ability to condition it at that point based on what was in the pattern book.
But the downside for the applicant is, he would have to have a sure enough real site plan already developed before he would come back to this body.
Yes. That's accurate.
Commissioner Kush, that's kind of the catch 22 to this type of development is that light industrial doesn't usually get driven by the actual business. It's usually driven by the zoning in which you open the opportunity up to bring those types of businesses to this location. It's, you know, commercial, maybe a little bit different in regards to that kind of stuff. You can find those opportunities, those avenues for it, but light industrial is difficult to bring forth without having that zoning in place so that you can market those types of, this type of property to those types of users. So, that's kind of where we're at.
Doug, have we set up precedent where we, we'll rezone a piece of property knowing that we don't know what's going to be there?
Can you, can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch the first part.
We, don't we need to know what's going to be there?
Well, that's a decision that I think collectively you need to make a recommendation on and then the Board of Commissioners needs to approve. Now, I think from staff standpoint, we have a better idea.
Mr. Clark, for the neighbors to know what's going to be there?
Right, we have a better idea from staff standpoint about the kind of impact it's going to have if we know the use is on the front end. Now, you know, I agree with everything Rob's saying, Rob Mulchen on, on here, I understand where he's going and Kendall Barrett as well, and Rob pretty much nailed it on the head when he said it's kind of a catch 22, you know, that's the nature of the beast at this point. So, you know, on one, on one hand, you're, you know, if you were to rezone the property, you're giving them a little more flexibility as far as marketing the property, but on the flip side of that, you're losing any kind of control you have on the front end of that. Everything else is going to have to come on the backside, you know, whenever we see a site plan. And by then, as long as the site plan meets the standards and kind of get back to what Nick was talking about, there's only going to be so much that you're going to be able to do on the back end. I mean, yes, it has to, it has to prove that it can meet, you know, health, safety, welfare and all those different things. That gets back to the access point to possibly to Shacklet Road and those kind of things which we would recommend against anyway. But, you know, it's kind of, like I said, it's kind of a, on one hand, you're giving him more flexibility, on the other hand, you're losing, you're losing a little bit of the control on the front end without a PUD. On the flip side, the PUD gives you more control on the front end of things to maybe counteract some of those impacts, but it may not be as attractive on their end of things just because it's harder to market for something like that. It's harder to get, from then to find somebody that's willing to make that kind of a commitment on the front end and say, yes, I want to go for a planned development here, but ultimately that's a decision that's, again, for us to recommend and then the County Commission to make a final determination on.
Has staff heard from anyone else besides Mr. Clark and, or from the Chamber at any calls on this?
We've gotten several. We've gotten several calls about this, yes, ma'am.
Positive, negative?
It was Mr. Clark, he spoke. Stacy Richards called the other day and, and added her name to the list. I guess she's not on the call. Uh, we've had some others as well that have expressed concerns on this, so, I mean, we have, I mean, to answer your question, yes, we have gotten call. And it's the same type of concerns, I think, that Mr. Clark had, you know, the traffic, the drainage, you know, those kinda, I mean, we hear those a lot, but they're legitimate concerns, especially for a development of this size, when you're looking to go from pretty much, you know, vacant undeveloped land to, you know, larger industrial-type uses with large buildings and large parking areas, lots of traffic. So, I mean, they're, they're legitimate concerns.
Doug, the next interchange in either direction, I-24, 840?
Going up to the north is probably Jefferson Pike. Going back the other way, it's probably, going back the other way, it's probably 41, I would think. Broad Street, Murphysboro Road.
Yes, that is, that is correct. It's Broad Street to the south, and it would be Jefferson to the north on that side. Uh, we'll say that the city of Murphysboro's long-range transportation plan, which is somewhat short-term, uh, is proposing to have another interchange, which would be the Goose Creek, yeah, the Cherry Lane, sorry, Cherry Lane bypass interchange would be between the, where Shacklet Road is, and the, uh, Broad Street interchange on that side. So, that's, that's the next interchange that is more or less being proposed via the city's long-range transportation plan, is that Cherry Lane extension to come all the way down from up by the Seagull Soccer Complex, all the way down through that portion and back down, create a new interchange, cross over 840, and then come back to a new interchange at I-24. So, dynamically, the area south of this is gonna change drastically in the next, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years with the extension of the city's roadway to create new interchanges at that location there, and then also at I-24. So, it's gonna create some, um, some more dynamic changes. You know, the city has their long-range plan on that side that has a lot of growth and density associated with these new interchanges in that little triangle area between I-24 and 840. But, yes, currently, the next interchange would be Broad Street on the south and Jefferson to the north.
Light industrial on either one of those? I'm just trying to go through my mind.
There is on the, um, on the Jefferson Pike interchange, there is some light industrial zoning up there. Uh, you remember the site plan probably from McCormick Trucking in that area. Uh, town of Smyrna recently annexed some property up an area that was actually in the county, was owned EAC. I think they did it as a planned development, uh, Hollingshead property, which would be, I guess that'd be the northwest corner of the intersection of the interchange there. Uh, going back the other way at 41, um, you know, currently, at least, the, the interchange that, uh, Rob was talking about, I think that's pretty much residentially zoned around there, as I recall. Uh, the interchange at 41, I think a good chunk of that is, yeah, Mike's gonna turn on the zoning. I think most of that is still, right around there is still zone county with, uh, yeah, there's mostly residential zoning right around there. Now, when you get into the, the city, uh, we do, there is, uh, when you get a little further from the interchange, there is commercially zoned property in the city. Um, that property that you see along, Mike, if you could zoom in, yeah, there you go. You see some purple and some red right there. Uh, that red is actually Don Bruce's property. That purple, right through there, is the, well, it used to be, I guess, Low Jack. Uh, now, they do have access onto Broad Street, but they also have, uh, an access onto Old Nashville Highway. Uh, that property where Don Bruce was just, uh, rezoned some property about a year or so ago, that doesn't have access back to Broad. That, that's directly on the Old Nashville Highway.
Doug, with a PUD, do they actually exactly what the use is?
Not necessarily. Uh, we have seen, uh, commercial or non-residential planned developments that'll have a range of uses. They're a little more, they can be, you can limit them. They don't have to be just specifically one use, that use, that use. It could be, uh, what I've seen and what I've recommended some applicants do is look at the activity classification in our zoning ordinance and say, "We'd like to include uses in the light industrial zone." So, anything that's classified as light industrial could be there. So, that, that is a possibility. And that they can, they can limit it. They don't have to keep it just at one use, but they can, they can have a range of uses, but you can reasonably limit it at that point, yes.
I'm trying to weigh in my head, and I'm talking out loud so everybody can pitch in here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go, well, I'm, I'm sorry, Pettis. Why, what would be the negative impact in, time-wise for us to ask them to do a, a modified PUD? Or, or a PUD? I'll take out the word modified.
Yeah, well, I, I guess, as far as time, I guess it would depend on how long it takes them to get something together. I mean, our next submittal deadline is tomorrow. I mean, obviously, they're not gonna have it done by then. Um, we are entering the summer months. Of course, the County Commission doesn't meet in July, so reasonably, they're probably looking at a planning commission application. If they were to start today and start moving forward, they could make an application possibly for July planning commission, maybe for the August County Commission, or maybe submit in July for August planning commission, September Board of Commissioners. A lot of it's on them, as far as how fast they actually get something submitted to us to review.
Excuse me, Commissioner, I didn't mean to step on you there, but the eyes at the back of my head, I hadn't got a haircut in a good while, and I couldn't see you. But, just like you, I've been trying to get this in my head there, and I, and I do understand within the county, uh, the importance of industrial development and, and what we do and whatever. But I also understand the importance of knowing what's going, where the development is, what, what's going in there. Uh, we've seen a lot of small developments come before us here, and they'll bring in something, and we'll sit here, and then all of a sudden, we'll say, "Well, we don't know what's going there, and you need to take this back and tell us what's there before we can do anything with it." And that's the problem I'm having here. I don't know what I'm looking at or whatever. And I do have a problem with that narrow going in and going out. I, I'm, I'm really wrestling with that right there in what we do. So, um, I'm, I'm just like, uh, like the Commissioner behind me here, it's, it's just hard to wrestle with what we're trying to do and where we're going to go. I, I, I agree with you, Pettis. I think we're all wrestling with that, but, uh, give us an answer.
Spoken like a true chairman.
This, this has gone all up and down the aisles, it's even been to balcony, and we still don't have an answer here.
I don't wanna prevent.
Pettis, I'll be glad to help you out if you like. I'll be glad to bail you out of this one if you like.
If you want to.
I, I, I'm having a hard time, I've had a hard time wrestling with this too, and I've been back and forth. And I certainly recognize the need for, uh, well-placed light industrial close to our interstates, um, where there's already noise, and we've got, uh, the trucks not running on our highways, running on the state and the federal highways. Yes, we need it. Uh, and this is an area that's relatively flat. We've been cut off from the Alma Ville Road, that's probably not topographically suitable for that. And these interchanges are very, very precious, and I see this as a good place for industrial sometime in the future. However, the proposal is rather ambiguous, and I, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with just throwing, uh, something so vague out into the county right there and saying, "Okay, we're gonna give you the zoning, go do what you want." I'd like to see some more specifics with it. I like the idea of the, of a PUD, uh, so that we can see what we've got to work with. So, therefore, I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
We have a motion and a second to deny item number REZ-20-011 for Barley Venture. Other discussion?
I share the same struggles as everyone in here, but the right development will present itself under the right conditions, and I, and I'm, agree with you, Mr. Everwater, I, I can't support it at this time with a blank check on such heavy zoning.
Thank you, Lee. Other questions or comments? Call to roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
P.
Yes, is a motion to deny.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to deny carries. Item 6E, the item number is REZ-20-012, Black Diamond Construction. Location is Shallow Water Way. Commission district is six. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately sixty acres. Tax map is 134. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for a planned unit development for a residential subdivision. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, our last rezoning application for tonight is located at the end of the Creekside Development, uh, Creekside Estates. Uh, Creekside Estates subdivision was originally approved by the Planning Commission as a conventional R-15-zoned subdivision back in 2007. Uh, this subdivision is adjacent to the subdivision to the north, which is called the Crossings at Lidle Creek, which was approved in 1998, also as an R-15 subdivision. A preliminary plan for Section 2 of Creekside Estates was approved by the Planning Commission at their September 24th, 2018 meeting for 52 lots under the RM zoning, which is what R-15 became under our new zoning code. Since that time, it's been determined that there's a significant amount of wetland soils that are not appropriate for development, so in order to maximize the use of the developable area, the applicant has requested this rezoning to allow for smaller lots, but still retain the lot yield that was originally approved. Information in the applicant's pattern book, and the pattern book is on your iPads, it's a separate attachment to the agenda packet that I sent, uh, states that the development will contain 51 lots. Uh, building lots will be a minimum of 7,200 square feet in size with a minimum of 60 feet in lot width. Homes will be a combination of one- to-story with a minimum size of 1,200 square feet. Homes would have a minimum 40% masonry on the front facade, with the remaining sides being vinyl-sided. Each home will have a two-car front-entry garage. Setbacks would be 35 feet on the front, 20 on the rear, and seven and a half feet on the sides. Again, I'll point you to the pattern book for additional information on that, so if you have other questions, feel free to ask them. A neighborhood meeting was held on this request, consistent with the regulations for planned developments back on March 5th of this year. Uh, the issues discussed included existing road conditions, drainage issues, and concerns about construction traffic. A primary access to this development would be from Shallow Water Way, which extends to Gatewood Drive, which ultimately extends to Homewood, which then extends to Lidle Creek Road. Uh, there is only one way in and out of this subdivision. Uh, the applicant has proposed a sub-street to the south, which could provide an additional access point should this property ever develop to the south. Uh, all roads would be required to meet current county standards. Uh, buffering is not typically required between residential developments, uh, but PUDs are required to provide at least 10% open space, half of which may, uh, must be usable, as defined by our zoning ordinance. Uh, the pattern book does show an amenity area, which would qualify as usable open space as well as other common areas. Uh, they need to clarify the calculations just to make sure it's in order, but it appears to, to be in good shape. And of course, performance standards, since this is a residential development, would not apply to this particular development. A couple other comments I would like to make. Uh, Deputy to the Mayor Sandlin had called me a little earlier today regarding this application. Uh, he's familiar with the applicants and just wanted to speak on their behalf as far as their, uh, character. He just wanted to be a character witness to them. I told him I would relay that to you in the meeting. Uh, also, I spoke with Jason Laxson with CUD prior to the meeting regarding the, uh, the need for a revised will-serv letter. The serve letter they have right now from CUD has expired. He doesn't anticipate any issues, but they would have to renew the, uh, will-serv letter prior to going forward with approval, so just wanted to get that out there as well. Uh, the property was previously approved for the same number of lots this application is requesting. Uh, the unsuitable areas are being set aside as open space and common area, and of course, the applicant will need to ensure that all wetlands areas are protected per federal, state, and local regulations. Uh, based on that analysis, staff does recommend approval, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. And I believe the applicant is, uh, on the call.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff? This was previously approved, uh, not as a PUD?
That's correct. It was an RM subdivision, 15,000-square-foot lots.
How long ago was that?
Uh, back in 2018.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Kush?
Doug, the, the Titan map you attached that shows a, a cluster of accidents all within very close proximity of one another, but where is that in proximity to this piece of property?
Right, yeah, and the, the issue with, uh, with this particular map was, uh, there wasn't anything that was right there for that development, so I was just trying to extend it out a little bit just to give you an idea. That is over, I believe that's Dilton-Mankin-Wilson overall intersection right there, or kinda, Dilton-Mankin kinda comes in, Wilson overall goes out, and then Lidle Creek kinda goes down. That's an ad-intersection, so that's a...
It's a coincidence.
Yes, yeah, it's not right there at the subdivision. That was the closest incidents that, that were reported by Titan.
Other questions for staff? Since we're doing things a little differently, I'm going to do things a little differently, and go ahead and declare the public hearing open, uh, and ask for the applicant to speak first.
Chairman Phillips?
Hey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Clyde Roundtree, the Houston Steel Engineering, I'm representing Mr. Randy Friesom and Mr. Kelly Wilson with Black Diamond Construction. Uh, Randy's online in my office, so if we need to ask him specific questions, we can. I think Mr. Wilson's listening as well. And Doug did a great job summarizing. Um, as was mentioned with the neighborhood meeting, the primary concern was the fact that Shallow, uh, Shallow All-Away, or Shallow Water Way is the only access point, so Mr. Friesom talked about that. And, and, and really, the primary concerns over heavy equipment going down the road and, and kids in the neighborhood, and, and what the commitment was from the builder was that we would, um, once the, all the heavy equipment was on site, there's very little reason to leave site. So, Randy committed to keep any heavy equipment on the property once the construction begins. Obviously, if you're building homes, there'll be various trades going through the property, but the primary concern was over heavy equipment. And then the neighbors were concerned about drainage and how to handle that. They've got a few issues drainage-wise. Uh, the exist, existing debt systems in place, and as mentioned, it's, it can accommodate 52, um, additional lots, and we won't be grading in there, so some of the drainage concerns, we won't be able to alleviate, but anything that's gonna touch what we'll be working, uh, Mr. Friesom has the capability of kind of helping out that situation. Um, and really, that was the primary, and, and obviously, the home values and, and the type of home going in. And so, we're committed to, at a minimum, maintaining the style of home that is already existing in that neighborhood, but really, we're probably enhancing that a little bit. Um, a lot of the homes don't have any masonry on them, uh, on the fronts, and we would be providing, uh, basically all, all along the front. And, uh, and as we've mentioned, we're going through the PUD process because of the lot sizes are smaller, and that's primarily because of the green space that was determined that needed to be preserved. Uh, the nice thing is, is more than half the lots will have, uh, basically visual access to the green space, as far as they'll butt it on the rear. Um, we, what, we can't really leverage it as an active-use area because it's green space and, um, and it's wetlands area, and so, you know, we can't go in there and disturb that, not even walking trails, because the neighbors did say, "Is there any way to put a walking trail in there?" But that's really prohibited from the development side. Uh, we do have the amenity center, it'll be located there, it has a pavilion. Uh, that'll be something new for the neighborhood, that's not currently available to the existing neighborhood. Um, we are open to letting the existing neighborhood use that pavilion. Uh, it'll be part of the... It'll be part of the flow of the neighborhood as a whole. And our area, we feel confident that the size of lots, because it'll back up to the wetlands and back up to green space, will afford, you know, a really nice pleasant living experience. And that was really the extent of it, Doug, to do the job summarizing everything. And as far as the will-serv letter, we did talk to CUD, and they're just requesting an updated site plan. They've approved it, as Doug mentioned, for the amount of lots that we're proposing. They just want to see the revised site plan before they provide the will-serv. And Doug said if we have that before we go to Board of Commissioners, that should be an issue. And as was mentioned, they don't see an issue. We just don't have a letter in hand. So with that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have. We look forward to the possibility of moving forward with this one.
Any questions for the applicant? Anyone else? The public hearing is open. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing or seeing none? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Is that developable in the near future?
Well, I mean, as far as any time, I mean, we haven't spoken to-- can you zoom out a little bit? Directly to the south, we haven't spoke to anybody. Now, that property immediately adjacent that you see to the left there, I mean, that's all within the city of Murfreesboro, so Maples subdivision, yeah.
The Maple subdivision right here in the southeast.
And you see the Whitworth Buchanan. At some point, there'll probably be-- there's enough room there for an additional school on that same property. But as far as any discussion with anybody to the south, we haven't had any. So, I mean, is it developable? I mean, sure, it could be a zone to the RM similar to what this property's on now, but nothing on our radar.
Mr. Chairman, this is Chip. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Chip. We had a motion and a second to approve item number REZ-20-012 for Black Diamond Construction. Other questions or comments? Call the roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve carries, thank you. We've had five public hearings tonight. Three were approved and two were not approved. All are scheduled to be heard before the Rutherford County Commission on June 11th, Thursday, June 11th, and they're scheduled to start at 6:30 PM here in this courthouse, in this courtroom. Other business, Doug?
Don't really have anything specific at this point. I'm going to steal a little of your thunder, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. The next Planning Commission meeting, when we did this agenda, we thought we might be meeting back in the mezzanine. That's not going to be the case. We are going to be in this room again. I wanted you to take special note of the date, being that Monday falls on a holiday, the Memorial Day holiday. We didn't want to make you come in there on that day, so we decided to dump that to Tuesday. So I just wanted to-- it will still be a 9 o'clock meeting, but we will be in this room and not in the mezzanine, so just FYI on that. It looks like we'll be in this room probably through the end of June at this point. So I would just bank on this being kind of our temporary home here for the next month and a half or so. That was all I had.
Everybody got that? Our next meeting is Tuesday morning, the 26th, instead of Monday morning, the 25th. Other questions or comments? Thank you for your attendance and your participation. We are adjourned.